Sorry I'm running a little bit late, but the plate's real full today. But we're actually gonna have a lot of time to discuss a lot of different items besides those on the agenda, so it looks like everything.
I'm getting a signal people aren't hearing you. You try to see, the mic is on.
Mic's on.
Okay. We're gonna, oh, hold on just a second.
Okay.
Turn the volume up.
So they didn't want to hear me this morning?
They do. I think the volume just went up. Go ahead and try speaking and...
Can you hear me now?
Okay, yes.
We're good? Okay. Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission's 10 o'clock meeting of February 6, 2024. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Present on the line.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford.
Here.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Here. Before we go any further, I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize Sarah Suckram. Is that the way you pronounce your name? Please come forward. She couldn't be present at the last meeting because was assisting the Humane Society of Pensacola with their reorganization efforts. Her outstanding contributions throughout the year were gone unnoticed. Sarah has not been gone unnoticed. Sarah has constantly demonstrated exceptional performance and above all, beyond and achieved remarkable results in her role. It's no surprise that she has been named Star Performer of the Year, and we invite you, Star Leader of the Year, Ben Deal, to be, to come up and for the photo. He didn't get at the last meeting, okay? Welcome. Congratulations. I guess we'd like to hear a little something from our star performer. That's good.
I apologize for missing the first announcement of this. I was very fortunate to get to assist in another shelter up in the Panhandle, so thank you all Commissioners, Mike, for taking time out today to recognize us. Really appreciate it. This has been very humbling for me, and I'll make this very quick, but first and foremost, I'd like to thank Mike for creating such a culture at Animal Services where we can innovate, and I feel very supported in trying new things. I have quite a few interesting ideas, I would say, throughout the years of being at Animal Services, and he's been very supportive. Secondly, I'd like to thank Kathy, wherever she is, for being just the definition of a public servant, and she's been a huge cheerleader for everything Animal Services has done. And third, last but certainly not least, I really just want to thank the citizens of Pasco. We have, I say it all the time at work, the best volunteers in the world, and what I get to do every day as a volunteer and foster care coordinator at Animal Welfare can be challenging at times, but I work with incredible people. I have several colleagues here today, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to Pasco County. We have incredible people doing incredible things, and I am very humbled to receive this, but it is truly a team effort, so thank you so much.
Beautiful.
All right, Mike?
Mike Schumay, Director of Animal Services, and I just want to present the award to Sarah on behalf of the Board, on behalf of the Administration, and all the peers. So Sarah, here is your Star Performer Award 2023.
Oh, we always welcome you to say anything.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
No, I would just, again, like to thank, you know, I think I already said some nice words about Ben, so your head's big enough, but Sarah, again, thank you. I had the opportunity to come and present Sarah, you know, originally to let her know that she had won the award, and got to meet the volunteers that she helps organize and run for our Animal Services group. She's not kidding. Animal Services is quite innovative, and I will tell you the one thing that was very, very evident, Sarah, and I think I mentioned this in there, you guys really are efficient with our taxpayer dollars. You take it and you stretch it, and it's through your effective use of volunteers. And I asked her, I mentioned that to her, and I forget the numbers you rattle off to me, but she knows it. She really knows, oh yeah, we save you $105,000, you know, whatever, you know, a quarter here on this, but they do fantastic work, and it's good work, and again, it's innovative. So I just say thank you. It's no wonder you're the Star Performer of the Year. Glad that you're out there teaching others on how to do the great thing. So that's really all I wanted to add to that, and I guess if we could, Mr. Chair, unless the Board has anything, we can do a picture. It's up to you.
Well, Mike, you can, I'm in my eighth year, and when I came on board eight years ago, it really was amazing, the difference between then and now. I mean, what a change to the department, and what great people you have working with you, and the turn, I guess the turnaround of all your helpers that you had from citizens that volunteered to help you, what they've done to pick up their part of the taking care of animals and doing that for the county, but you're not just doing that for yourselves, you're doing that for all the citizens of Pasco. We can be grateful all the time for Animal Services here in Pasco County, so y'all have done a great job, and all, of course, you're being highlighted, but all your staff, they're all a part of a team that wins this award, and y'all just shine on top of that, which is great, so I thank you. Any other board members like to say something?
Just congratulations, and I'm glad that you could come in person to receive your award, so.
So...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Congratulations. I wanted to echo that. Are you, happen to be a veteran?
I'm sorry?
Are you a veteran?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
She look like a veteran, or?
Well, we, someone was deployed.
Someone, she used the word "deployed," so I don't...
Yeah, she's not a staff sergeant like Sergeant, like Sergeant Starkey here, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Sarah, I'd like to thank you. Amazing work, congratulations. And Mike, with the team that you've assembled over the years and the great work you're doing, the citizens greatly appreciate it too, so thank you.
Okay. If I could have the board members, Mr. Bradford, if you'll stay up here with the attorney, County Attorney and Clerk standing here behind us, we'll go down for pictures.
Wait, am I supposed to sit down? I think so.
Sarah, congratulations.
I'm gonna go to the bottom, sorry.
Is Sarah with your team?
Yes, please.
Please, team members, come up. Hey, we're on a tight schedule, let's go.
She said it takes a team.
If I could get Ben to come up real quick?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mark?
Oh, sorry, Mark, you good?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Oh, yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Well done. the Code Compliance Department who recently passed. Our thoughts and our prayers go with their family and their fellow team members during Okay, now we'll move on to public comment. The citizens will have the opportunity to comment on anything for our current agenda and future agenda coming before the Board and other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment for those in person, and then we will take public comment from those who are on WebEx and are currently on Q. We request that when you address the Board, you are not directly personally against, make any thoughts against any Commissioner or team member, but rather stick to the issues. This provides virtual respect for each Board Member and the public. After starting with your name and address for the clerk, three-minute timer will be activated after two minutes. A single beep will sound. After that, or two beeps will sound at the end of your conversation. I ask that you finish your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected if their time is up. Do we have a sign-up sheet, and someone signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have three individuals that signed up on the sign-up sheet. We have Tamara Dishi, Allison Moore, and Nancy Hazelwood. The first speaker could please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and then you may proceed.
Name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Tamara Dishi. I live at 15620 Mattis Road in Hudson, 34669. And thank you for allowing me to speak today. This is my turnaround story. I'm going from pleading my case for permission to build a replacement home on my property while still remaining there, to praising my Lord and Savior for answering prayers. I've gone from grovelling about the online county permitting process to publicly here expressing my gratitude for my County Commissioner, Mr. Jacque Mariano, and his assistant, Sonia Walling, for stepping in on this situation. I want to also thank my Commissioner, Mariano. You've always supported your constituents, and you've always voted to help keep our area of Hudson agricultural in nature, and you've helped to fight to lower the density in the PUDs that have been approved recently. You know, our tagline is "open spaces, vibrant places," but the natural areas are disappearing. A turnaround from peaceful, open spaces to prolific, crowded places. In 1992, I moved to Pasco County, and I bought an AC-zone piece of property on Mattis Road. I raise a family there, and we've had wonderful times there on Mattis Road, and then I bought a second piece of property on Mattis Road where I've been living ever since 1998. So half of my life has been living on the farm on Mattis Road. So I've always dreamed of having a cottage in the back of my long tent. I have a lot of field and trees in the front, and lots of oaks in the back, and I've always wanted to live in my woods. So as I approach retirement age, I have the opportunity to build a custom home, and I want to shout out to Palmwood Construction and CEO Chris Glover, because he's approached this permitting process with common sense and a voice of reason. They're a great company, no-nonsense, family-oriented, values-oriented, and I really appreciate the support that Palmwood Construction is giving me. Back in 2020, I did impact fee research and found out I'm not allowed to have two homes on my property, even though I'm sandwiched in between two properties with two large block homes. Fast forward to 2022, a PUD was approved across the street from me, 1,400 homes. Now I want to move back in my woods, but I found out in December 26, when I submitted a demo permit, that I would have to, I would have to have the existing structure may not remain on property while building new structure. That would mean I'd have to be homeless in order to build a home. It really makes no sense. I only want to move 600 feet away, and it would require a whole turnaround of my life. I'd have to quit my job, move everything out of my house, remove the house, rent somewhere else in order to build a prop, another home, a nice home, on my property. So I'm here, you know, asking for help from the county to please turn around on their decision in this instance, and I want to thank you for giving me this time to speak.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allison Moore?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name's Allison Moore. I live at 12606 Marion Lane in San Antonio, 33576.
You can go ahead, thank you.
So, good morning, thanks for listening to me. My name, like I said, is Allison. I live on a little five-acre farm in San Antonio off a road called Marion Lane. I'm here today representing 20 or so neighbors who have farms on or adjacent to Marion Lane. We have been expressing strong opposition to a project that has been in your planning department for quite some time. I come here today because after almost a year of dealing with the county offices, I feel at a loss for anyone to hear the concerns of those of us that will be adversely affected if this project continues to move forward. Marion Lane is a private gravel road off of Pasco Road. It is relatively rugged road, not much wider than your car. It has been maintained over the years by neighbors through gentleman agreements. It also has a culvert on its south end that crosses Cypress Creek. Marion Lane has multiple homes that are part of Bowman Retreats, which is a deed-restricted community that only allows five-acre lots. Easement owners have granted ingress and egress to two properties south on Marion Lane, and a new neighbor has come in and purchased one of these properties, and it's a five-acre lot like the rest of us, but now he wants to subdivide it into one-acre lots to develop it. He would be building, he said when he first came to our neighborhood, he would be building a home to have a garden and all these things, and at the time, he was filing papers with the county to subdivide the property. Commissioners, we're appealing to you to stop this development from moving forward. While we understand that properties in our area have these future land use codes, that doesn't mean that it makes sense for the current conditions in the surrounding areas. It is not right that multiple private road owners such as myself must accommodate such a project that will only devalue our community. Please understand that this owner must traverse our private road to get to that development that he wants to make, and we don't want the predicted 77 passes that the county says will come of these extra homes. It's not conducive to the neighborhood. They will have to drive through to reach these proposed home sites, and it's not feasible for our primitive road to even handle this kind of traffic. This developer knows that we are distraught and vehemently disagree with this project, and it will depreciate our home values and alter our way of life. He's come to our neighborhood to make money off of these lots and change our way of life. I'm begging you Commissioners to look at this more closely than the planning department has done so far. They have given no thought to how these lots will be accessed or how it will affect our life. This access was granted to not landlocked this man, but it wasn't the intent of our easement to support this or to change our landscape of the community. I included, this is my driveway here on the left, and that's the driveway on the right that you would access those new homes, and right before where it splits is a culvert that goes over Cypress Creek. As you can see, it's not very wide, it's very rugged, one car can fit there, so 77 more passes through that just doesn't logistically make sense. And then that's more of the road, and then I also went around and had a petition signed by all the neighbors that opposed this development in our neighborhood, and it's been extremely frustrating process with planning and development. And I don't think I mentioned the project, but it's called Marion Lane, and it's like a resub, and I have the numbers here of the project, and the name is on the petition that I had scanned in.
All right, thank you for comments.
Next I have up is Nancy Hazelwood.
Nancy Hazelwood, 34110, a nice place, receive and file.
Move to City 5. Got a motion?
Second.
A second. All those favor say, roll call vote.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano. He would be building, he said when he first came to our neighborhood, he would be building a home to have a garden and all these things. And at the time, he was filing papers with the county to subdivide the property. Commissioners, we're appealing to you to stop this development from moving forward. While we understand that properties in our area have these future land use codes, that doesn't mean that it makes sense for the current conditions in the surrounding areas. It is not right that multiple private road owners such as myself must accommodate such a project that will only devalue our community. Please understand that this owner must traverse our private road to get to that development that he wants to make, and we don't want the predicted 77 passes that the county says will come of these extra homes. It's not conducive to the neighborhood. They will have to drive through to reach these proposed home sites, and it's not feasible for our primitive road to even handle this kind of traffic. This developer knows that we are distraught and vehemently disagree with his project, and it will depreciate our home values and alter our way of life. He's come to our neighborhood to make money off of these lots and change our way of life. I'm begging you commissioners to look at this more closely than the planning department has done so far. They have given no thought to how these lots will be accessed or how it will affect our life. This access was granted to not landlocked this man, but it wasn't the intent of our easement to support this or to change our landscape of the community. I included, this is my driveway here on the left, and that's the driveway on the right that you would access those new homes. And right before where it splits is a culvert that goes over Cypress Creek. As you can see, it's not very wide. It's very rugged. One car can fit there, so 77 more passes through that just doesn't logistically make sense. And then that's more of the road. And then I also went around and had a petition signed by all the neighbors that opposed this development in our neighborhood. And it's been extremely frustrating process with planning and development. And I don't think I mentioned the project, but it's called Marion Lane, and it's like a resub, and I have the numbers here of the project. The name is on the petition that I had scanned in.
All right. Thank you for comments.
Next I have up is Nancy Hazelwood.
Nancy Hazelwood, 34110. A nice place. Receive and file.
Move to City Five. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those favorites say, oh, roll call vote.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District One, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
I came across the belly wadding on Project Unhappy Hill and ran into this image of where basically grading or mining is allowed in the Northeast Rural Area Plan. You guys all know that that's my belly wad, the Northeast Rural Area Plan. So it took me a while to notice it, but I was kind of, alarm bells started ringing. But I find, thanks to speaking with some of your attorneys, that we're pretty protected from this mining. And that's wonderful. I'd like it to have another look at it, since you're updating the plan, and make sure, because up on the screen will be in a second what they did in Date City to the hills out by us. So part of this, there's a Lakouchi area, and there are five areas actually in part of that that's, I believe it's what Mr. Oakley said was going to be developed at one home per acre that can be mined. And if you take the Lakouchi area out of the Northeast Rural Area, that protection will not be there anymore. So I'd appreciate it if you all would take a look at this and think about mining our hills. These are the Brooksville Ridge. It's high-recharge area, which basically means you're getting more water into your aquifer and the quality of the water supply that comes. So I just wanted to make you all aware of this. Also, I'm going to leave you with this thought. Why not make a special taxing unit of the Northeast Rural Area Plan? Work with us. Give us some of your staff to work together and do something. If we could work together, I think we could definitely get a plan for that area and keep it protected. I definitely volunteer to help. And I've made this suggestion before, but nobody's ever taken me up on it. Maybe the time is here before it's totally gone.
Upside down.
Upside down. It's almost there.
That's not okay.
So actually protecting our water sources and the topography of the Brooksville Ridge from development, I would think would be a major concern to Pasco County. And this is Date City, and the road was where that land used to be. It's no longer there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else sign up?
Mr. Chair, I have no one else signed up.
Anybody on WebEx?
No one on WebEx.
Can you leave that, leave that side?
There are people that wanted to speak and can't, and we would have needed to have a sign up sheet.
Number one, you can't speak from there. If there's anyone in the room wish to speak, please line up, because you were not signed up, so we will hear you speak. You were given your opportunity for three minutes.
It's hard hearing. I asked her just to tell when if you want to speak. We want you to move on.
State your name and address for the clerk.
My name?
Your name and address for the record, please.
Priscilla Harrison.
And your address?
15319 Calista, C-A-L-L-I-S-C-A, Lane, Date City, Florida, 33523.
Thank you, ma'am. You may proceed.
Well, I'm here because I live in a window that's owned by the Housing Authority, Pasco, and I've been there for five years and like three months. Well, the property was built on top of a swamp area. I had reported to them when I came here last year, like around June, July, because I've been, back in October 22nd, when the hurricane came through, it damaged something in the roof where was a leak. My whole house smelled like mold. The property manager was out of town. She took off for like two weeks because she got married. I spoke with the supervisor of maintenance to let him know what was going on. He said that they had to put in a work order and they'll send somebody out. I met with her. She told me that they was going to have a meeting because they got 13 houses in the subdivision. And she said after she found out what happened in the meeting about getting the roofs repaired, she'll contact me. Well, three months later, I contacted her because I started seeing mold in my house more. And she said that they didn't have the money to get the property fixed, so they couldn't replace the roof. So FEMA didn't pay for anything because I'm not the homeowner, and they felt like they should have insurance, and I guess they should have been able to cover. I had insurance, but they didn't cover anything because I wasn't the owner. So like in December, in the November, I have a car that I was giving my son for his birthday this month, so I had it in the garage. I was in my shower and my power went off, so I sent my kids in the garage to click the power on and click it back off. Click it on, so it'd come on because I was in the shower. When I got in the garage, I had electricity in the garage. I got in the garage, they had a flashlight. They said, Mom, your car is full of mold. I said, Are you serious? So when I got in the shower, I went in, I looked, and it was full of mold. I reported to them that it was mold damage in my house again. They never sent anybody out until last week. The gentleman came out, he said that there's some mold, but everybody in the community have the issue. I've got seasoning, which I got in my personal containers, I go to Sam's Club, they're all moisture. I have pictures of my cabinets where the moisture from the cabinets. I have accused my kids of wasting stuff on the floor. I have a disability, and I have fell like several times. It was the moisture in the flooring. I have cracks in the flooring. There's electrical issues in there. The maintenance guys that work for them, all 13 houses have maintenance issues. So what happened, the builder that built the houses, he gave them to the housing authority, not passing inspection. He couldn't sell them. So basically, they just took over. I don't even feel like any of the information like is in the court system is legit, and we're not supposed to be in the houses at all.
Right.
I've moved there and I stayed there, and my house was handicap accessible. For three years, I could not use my shower. And when she came to my house to do, they do this inspection once a month when they come with the pest control. They're supposed to come the first Friday every month, but the last two and a half years, they come when they want to. They put a 24-hour notice on the door.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up. Mike, do you have someone to speak with her?
Absolutely.
Okay. If you will, go outside with this gentleman here, and he'll address your issues with you.
I appreciate that because I reached out.
Thank you for coming. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Wait, wait, ma'am. She's got to get her purse.
Oh, get her purse, yeah. Is anyone in the audience wish to speak? Come forward. Name and address. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Peggy Byrne, B-Y-R-N-E. I live at 12363 East Point Drive. I'm here today also about belly wadding that someone spoke about earlier. They have filed saying that Meritage Homes, they filed a new plan to develop 99 homes on their tract, which is on Happy Hill and then bordering the other tract owned by the Pittman-Massie families that borders County Route 52. The original promise that was made at the planning board meetings was that there would be a 200 to 300-foot setback from the homes on that west side of the parcel that border East Point Drive. The reason for that, well, there's multiple reasons for it, but a primary reason is that the neighbors wanted to ensure that that green belt was preserved. We have many animals that live in there, including alligator, more than 100 gopher turtles at last count, and we also found that we have a Florida panther living there. So we are asking that no further development be allowed until somebody actually goes and evaluates this green belt appropriately. We are still of the belief that this should have never been moved out of the Northeast Rural Zone. There was no reason for it. There was no change in that land other than who owns it. I just do not believe, and I speak for many people here today, that just because you are a powerful name in this county, that you should be able to go and bully your way through and change what's a protected zone. The crime of it all is that our agricultural commissioner, Wilton Simpson, is one of the owners of belly wadding, one of the principals. And here he is trying to develop land that's a protected species here in Florida. We know that the planning board ignored everything that was said. Everybody that spoke at planning board meetings, one and two regarding this, no one was in favor of it, not one parcel adjoining this. The only person that was in favor was Mr. Havi, who was given four times the amount to speak as the people that were adjoining that property. So we violated all kinds of issues there. I would very much hope that this board would take the time to look and see what's going on. It's most unfortunate that neighbors have now gone, I have just been advised, to the governor, to the state, and to the federal government for protection of this property. I thoroughly advise you not to allow any development of this property until you go and you really do a proper ecological study. The last one that was done was in 2022. That is when the gopher turtles were 66 in number. They are now more than 100. You could actually see them during the day going from their one nest and outside. We also have an American bald eagle, of which I have a picture of, I took it. So it's a very active ecological zone. It should not have been moved. We also have a water shortage in that area, and because of that water shortage, we are very concerned. You don't have enough water to allow watering for the beautyment of, excuse me, the look of properties that are adjoining it. And yet, here we are going to allow 100 new homes that are using water. And then where is that water going to go, the runoff from those homes? Only down into that ecological area there. We don't want it. Everybody opposed it, and we've never, ever been given a reason why this was voted on and moved from the Northeast Rural Zone. No one has given the residents of this county the courtesy of that answer. When I was told it was going to the MUPD zone, they said, well, we have this master plan and we're going to connect it. That zone will never be connected because East Point is part of Lake Jovita, a closed community. I thank you for the time. I hope you will take the time to listen and investigate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wish to speak at this time? Seeing no one, do we have anybody on WebEx?
No one's on WebEx.
Nobody on WebEx?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And there's no emails or anything of that nature?
No, no.
Okay. All right. At this time, we'll close the public comment section and move on to consent. See what I have here. I have one item on the poll list, which is C-15, and it is being withdrawn. Is there any other items wish to be pulled by the commissioners?
Seeing no one, move approval to the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay. I got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District One, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. I'm not sure if my record show what to do after that, but, okay, we'll move on to, is there any regular items?
R-36.
36. 36.
R-36.
Confirmation of Planning and Economic Growth Directive.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Major.
Thank you. Chairman Oakley, Board, Roy Major, Assistant County Administrator for Development Services. So probably the biggest part of the Development Services reorganization is the naming of a new director for the new Planning and Economic Growth Group. And so I would ask the board to consider Dave Engel for the director of the new Planning and Economic Growth Department. David will have zoning, the new planning services team, and economic growth all reporting to him, and I feel great about entrusting the direction of this new group to Mr. David Engel.
Mr. Engel.
Thank you. Thank you for reserving all the R items for me this morning. You know, I am brief. I just want to thank the board for considering my confirmation. This is a very important job for the county. We're at a crossroad, and I know that everybody has expectations, leadership, executive team, the team members that I work with on a daily basis. And my mission is to reach those expectations and make the county a better place to live for tomorrow. So I thank you.
Yeah. I thank you. I don't know you very well, but I hope to know you better in the future, so. But Dave is a very smart individual. I've kept him close because he's so smart. I figured maybe it'd rub off on me, so, but... Mr. Chair? Yes. David, you gotta dumb you down when you talk to me. You know, English, smartest guy I ever knew.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bradford, and I hope to reach those aspirations.
Yes. Well, along with this, I also would like to say that business, construction services with Roy Major coming on and you coming on with the planning and the realignment of things, there's a real light at the end of that tunnel that we've been looking for, and I think it's close to being here, so.
Well, I also want to say that Terry Petos is a great colleague of mine. I've enjoyed our relationship over the last six years, and we will continue working and striving for better in the county. Thank you.
I thank you all, all of you. You make a very great team for us and the administrator to do great works. We look forward to seeing you in the future, and a lot of good things are going to happen in Pasco County, so. Mr. Mariano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, I'm going to make the motion in just a minute here after Commissioner Starkey goes or she will, but I think it's a great move for the county to bring you in. Roy, you said you were going to shake things up and make some big moves. This is another big move. I think it's a well-deserved one. Mike, as you said, you were going to focus on this issue as far as permitting, construction services, well as economic development, and it's just another great move for the great individuals that we have in the county to move up, and I'm delighted about it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Starkey?
Congratulations to you. We work a lot together, and I'm looking forward to working with you more. And Roy, I'm really excited with all the good advancements that I think you've made in our departments. You know, it's not our job. It's our job to pick him, and then, and so I think you're actually both doing a great job, so. And, you know, I look forward to working more with Terry as well. I think this plays to people's strengths a little better, and we're a growing county, and responsibilities, you know, get shifted and shared more and more, and I'm sure we're looking to bring in even more people, especially a trails person, so look forward to that as well. But congratulations on your new role and for Terry on his new role, and others who I think there were some more changes, so congratulations to everybody.
Mr. Waitman, do you have something to say?
Thank you, Chair. Just, you all said that, so, Mr. Engel, let me know.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Move approval.
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. By roll call vote?
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District One, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you for not continuing, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And now we're looking for a lot of great things happening in the county here, so we got a great team, so. It continues to get better, so. With that, we'll go to our ordinary business, old business. District Two, Mr. Waitman.
Thank you, Chair. I've locked this today. I have a few hours of my time for county attorney gold speed, maybe with local updates, my app force, so. I don't know if you start your clock later this afternoon, so that's what I use my time for.
Okay.
Well, I'm happy to give an update. Maybe we should let everybody go through normal miscellaneous business and then I could do that.
We can do it in county attorney gold business.
Yeah, or we can do it in county attorney gold.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that. All right, thank you. All right. Uh, Ms. Starkey?
Um, so I, I emailed some, some photographs to Katie, not realizing I could just email them over there to Derek, so I don't know if he's received anything. She may not know you're sitting there. Okay, so there's different ones. So, you know, I like to drive through my districts and, um.
I've seen this picture.
This is brand new. I took this yesterday because this was, this is my quarter on Patriot.
I can change, but.
Well, it's not out in the street with the red cones around it protecting his valuable merchandise. But I, I, I have a, a friend who lives on the street. He's bought the house across the street. He's been working on it, cleaning it up. And I'm just not okay, that we're okay to leave this for about seven months until the court systems work their way through this. And he also, well, I, I might not tell you where exactly he lives on the street, but I, I understand there's quite a bit of drug dealing going on out of this as well, so. I know we cleaned it up last time, not too long ago, six months ago, and this is back where we are today. But I just, I just think we have to suck it up and clean it again and, or, or do something, not let this sit for seven months while it works through the courts. This trailer, the bank is foreclosing on it. Our attorney's office says it'll take about five months, and then they'll have sixty days to demolish it. So we're talking, this neighborhood has to live with this for seven more months. I just want to know, is there anything we can do?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If they're dealing drugs out of there, that's a criminal offense.
Yeah.
So maybe Sheriff Naco did get involved, and he's able to prove the case, seize that property a lot quicker than the court system. I don't know what the attorneys would say about it, but it's worth a shot.
Well, I'm not sure that the, the sheriff's office would be able to seize the property quicker, but there might, but they certainly can get action through the criminal court system faster than, than the foreclosure system. You know, the last time, my recollection is, we removed the stuff that was in the public right-of-way. That's really all you can do without a court order that says you, you can clean up the,
This is not a health code, uh, health violation? I mean, for the neighborhood?
You still have to get, you're still going to have to get an order from the court to go onto private property and clean it up. I mean, that's the.
Sure, that's same process.
That's what we've done in the past, when we've gone, when we've gone onto property to clean it up, we have, um, we've gotten a court order to do that, and that's, you know.
Can we do that?
We can do that, but it, you know, we can, we can go, we can process an injunction, but it's, you know, that, it's not a overnight process.
Well, it's, is it seven months? Because otherwise, that's when we, that's Christmas of next year.
We can, we can see what we can do.
Is code working on this now?
No, because it's in the courts, so.
I would assume that was as a result of code being involved that it was in the courts. I mean, if the Board wants us to clean the right-of-way, I'm sure that's within my spending authority if you direct me to do that.
Yeah, everything north of the pole?
Within the right-of-way, that's fine. If you wanted to direct that, we'll do it.
Okay, so what happened last time, when we went to clean up? And for those who don't remember, they were all the way out to the middle of the street. As the family came, and they started throwing everything that was in this guy's yard into the street, and with our encouragement, I mean, to clean up as much as, as we could. Now, it's a sad story. This gentleman was married. He, he, a couple of years ago, he lost a two-year-old child. I don't know to what, but his life deteriorated after that, so there's some, obviously some mental issues going on here, and so it is a sad story, but this is just not a, it's just not okay for the neighborhood. None of us would live next to this, and just because this is a financially challenged neighborhood, the people in that community shouldn't have to be looking at this every day. Um, do you know, do we know how much it cost us to clean it up last time?
I wouldn't know offhand. I mean, I'm sure it was less than ten thousand dollars, but.
I, I would, Board members, I, I would like to try and get this cleaned up again, if you're okay with spending. I mean, we, we leaned the property, right?
We'll track those costs. I mean, if it's the right-of-way.
Well, the property's not worth ten, well, I want to get, we can start on the, on the right-of-way, but I think the family will discharge into the right-of-way as fast as we can load it, because that's what they did last time.
Have some cleaned up.
Now, I'm going to tell you that lot's probably not worth ten thousand dollars. There, there's lots in here that I, when, when Marcy came on board, that I had hoped we could give to Habitat for Humanity, so, so that this neighborhood start, started turning around. As a matter of fact, right down the street, uh, we did a, you were there. This is right near the house that we did for Habitat for Humanity.
I remember seeing that house.
Yeah. So, and frankly, this is the only house that's like this in that community. There's a few streets over, there was another guy who had dozens and dozens of bikes in his front yard, and he was repairing them. But it's, it's not as bad as this, but it's pretty bad. We, we need a sweep in this community, but I'd just like us to see if we could pursue a court action to clean it up, maybe?
What's this?
So I will, we, we can initiate, Board's fine, we'll, we'll initiate a cleanup of the, of the right-of-way. As far as the court issue, I defer to Jeff on that, but.
So we have to have a motion for that?
No.
No motion?
No.
Okay, well, let's go that route, and that'll take some, a little time, but at the same time, it's in the courts, so we'll be moving on forward with that, so.
So Katie is texting me that the court date is in March. So, and that, okay, I thought it was in, I don't know what that means.
That's close.
And, and yes, I, I would imagine we get it cleaned up, you know, he may start doing it again, but is there any kind of like Baker Act, or is there anything else? Is there anything we could do to help this guy so he doesn't keep doing this?
It's kind of one of them.
We could have, we could have Public Services or Human Services reach out.
We, we, I think we did that last.
I think we've done that.
I mean, it's probably the worst one I've ever seen. I don't even know how he's getting in his house. Can you switch to any of the other pictures?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starkey, if you clean this up, and the thing's so close to March, you may take away all the violations and then you're starting over again. You might want to wait, wait till March to see what happens with the court date.
It's pretty close.
The resident's going to court in March. I guess he has a court hearing. All right, well, I'll, I'll work with the attorney's office, just, I just don't want this to sit till December.
I do have some information. It cost us eight thousand dollars to, to clean it up. It does have a lien, apparently. There is a court date next month, and I am told that there's really no, no cause from our conversations with the sheriff on taking the guy on the Baker Act.
There's, there's.
There's no, there's no legitimate reason, I guess, or legal reason to Baker Act him.
Okay.
What other act is there? Is it, is it, it's not against the law to do this?
It's a violation of your ordinances for junk and debris, but that he is going, that, that those citations are going to court on three-fourteen. So that's, it's our proceeding that will be there on three-fourteen. The email I got from Sam is, we previously cleaned up the entire property pursuant to a court order. Within weeks, it was full of junk again.
Yeah.
So there may be, there may be a, let me talk to, to my team. There may be a contempt proceeding that we can bring.
Yeah, because maybe he was told he couldn't do this again.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
You have other items?
What else do I have on there? Oh, do I have any? Okay, so I was, I cut my ski trip short to go to Washington and be there for the Audrey Nelson Community Development Award, and we had the opportunity, Tom, Madonna and I, to speak to the group with staff about our, our program. And unfortunately, they had the Assistant Secretary for HUD speaking, and she went a little long, and I think we all went a little long before, so Tom and I didn't actually get to go up on stage and receive the award that we went there for. But they had made a duplicate, and we went outside and took a picture while the HUD Secretary was speaking, so. Very proud of all our staff and, and the county for being so positive about AMSKILLS. We also went up to the Hill, and we met with the U.S. Department of Labor Office of Apprenticeships, and they let us know about some grants that are coming up, and they were, they said our program here hits all three marks that they're trying to, to do in the country, and they're going to come down, take a look at it, but they looked, they were very excited to hear about this program. They did not know about it. I had been to that office in the previous administration, but not this one. They're very excited about our, our program, and they put one of their top guys on, on a Zoom call to join in with us. And also, went to the Office of the Committee for Workforce and Education, and met with the professional staff of Congresswoman Virginia Fox, who, he and another gentleman on the Democratic side are writing the reauthorization of the workforce innovation act and opportunity act, and good stuff coming out of that if it gets out of Congress. It's passed its committee, and it's in the House, so Jack will talk about this more when we're in NACO. But there's good, you know, we've been giving money to Career Source for, for training because the federal money is so hard for companies to use. And we've been talking about this nationally in my committee at, at NACO, and, and had a lot of labor and folks on, on conference calls, saying how difficult it was, and they're, they're hearing us, and I, I'm hoping that there'll be some good changes in the way that communities and businesses can use that money for workforce training. Something I wanted to bring up was, well, this is a, this is a question I had for Terry and Ben, or Brad. I, I sent this out to you, but I was, while I was looking at that property that those ladies were speaking about, I saw this. And I've not been in here, Commissioner Oakley, I don't know if you've been in this neighborhood. Is this in Pasco, or is this in St. Leo? It's been there a while.
What property is it?
It's that new part of Lake Jovita with the smaller.
Oh, it's the, on the east side, it's been there a while, yeah.
Can you zoom in on that closer, Derek?
It does appear to be in Pasco County.
Okay, I want, I want you to look at the trees. You know, obviously, they took out a bunch of trees, but I'm just wondering, where, where are the replacements? Where's the landscaping that was supposed to go back into this neighborhood? Because I'm sure they had a, I'm sure they were required to put trees in somewhere.
How recent is that picture?
Well, people are living there, and they, you can see the cars in the driveway, so I'm going to drive through there after this meeting, but this is, this is my.
It's just, it's your first entrance on the right as you go out fifty-two?
Yeah.
And it was part of Lake Jovita?
I've asked for what the requirements were in this neighborhood, if someone could email that to me. That, that's all, Terry, I just wanted to, I, I want to find out what happened.
It's part of Lake Jovita?
I, and I, I just can't imagine that that is built legally. I hope it's not. I mean, I hope that we required more than that in our landscape code. I wanted to talk to you all about red light cameras in school zones. Maybe some of you have also talked to people about this. Hillsborough County just passed an ordinance that will suspend, wait, we don't want to talk about that one yet. Last year, the legisla, I think it was last year, approved the ability to put red light cameras in school zones. And I don't want them all around that county like they have in Newport Ritchie and other places, but I, I am considering, and would like to, us to have discussion if we think red light cameras are appropriate in a school zone. People frequently zoom in those, those areas, and it's very, I mean, go fast.
So, so they would be, they wouldn't be red light cameras, they would be speed zone cameras, right? Is it, red light cameras are, are traffic infract, traffic light infractions, but what you're talking about is.
At a red light.
Speed?
I think it's the same kind of technology that they have, that some cities have that we didn't want in the county. But they would put these in the school zone, so if, if you've not heard much about this, we'll have, maybe my office could send some, something out, but I think protecting kids in school zones is a good thing, personally.
We all agree on that. Is that it?
Uh, well, Jack wanted to comment on that.
I was going to say, and I met the folks as well, and a lot of them are, are ex-law enforcement. I did want to have them talk to the school board to really study the issue, to see what their thoughts were as well.
Yeah.
To see if it's a real big issue that we need to go forward on, because I tell you, these red light cameras from Port Ritchie and Newport Ritchie, they were supposed to get rid of them a few years ago, and now they're making too much money, they're not going to make that move. So I, I hate to put that extra big brother out, out there as well, but I do, I do believe in the safety as well.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it anywhere.
So I'll let them see what they, we're going to come back with the school board and come back to us.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
What's the breakup of the money? Who gets what? Does the county get a piece, or?
We do.
Does it, we get it all?
Uh, they get a portion, we get a portion. I, I don't have any of that information.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer.
In, in detail. I just know that it works to slow people down in school zones, so.
Yeah, if I could, I got a little information. I, I think it's almost like a fifty-fifty share. It's like, if it's an eighty-four dollar ticket, half would go to the company, the other half would go to the school board. And again, the, the thing that scares me about it is you make that too attractive to make that revenue, whether you need it or not, whether it's effective or not, it's hard to pull away a tax that people are getting for, so I'm, I'm a little hesitant to it, but I went to the school board to look at it first.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'd be happy if we never got a penny from it, if it just worked to keep people from, from speeding it.
Right. I think we all want school zone safe.
Yeah. The, the next thing is, I've become aware of an ordinance that the Hillsborough County Commissioners voted on, on January seventeen, and that's suspending vape shops from opening up near schools. I just recently penned an op-ed on vaping and the influx of illegal vapes from China that actually have fentanyl in them. So I haven't seen it printed yet in the paper, but I, I hope that it gets out there. But this ordinance, I think that we should look at this zone of no, no vaping around schools, because, you know, they're making them look attractive to, to kids even. I mean, it's crazy, but it's sad that we need more regulation, but I think that we need to regulate the vape shops around schools. So maybe we could have staff look at the Hillsborough County ordinance, and I think there's a pass in all over the state, and take, take a look at it. Did I have anything else up there? I, I, I wanted to talk about, we have a lot of time today, some of the, the things that those ladies brought up. What, what is this? What are these green? Does anyone know? It's, it's limits to topographical alterations, and on the green part of it, it says mining. So are all these areas being mined, or subject to mining? And I, and I guess I bring, I guess I want to say, I am not happy with Date City doing that. You know, when they annexed the property and they cut the hill down, what, and those poles are sticking up like that?
Well, that's.
Those maps are actually.
That's been changed.
Areas where we prohibit mining. They're, they're showing areas where we, greater than six percent slope.
Okay, so they can't ta, they can't mine on those green areas?
They can't mine in, if there's a greater than six percent. No, they can do mass grading, I want to be clear, and this is what I was trying to explain to Nancy. They can still do some grading of the site, but they can't mine the hill away, basically. So the picture that Nancy was showing you earlier of what Date City allowed, I don't think would be allowed under our code.
Well, how do we talk to Date City about stopping the destruction of the hills? Because I saw this happen in Claremont, it was very disturbing, which is why I kind of advocated for this in the northeast Pasco Rural Protection Ordinance.
So occasionally, you do have meetings with the cities, you know, the.
When are we doing that again?
I don't know, I'm just saying, that would be a good topic for discussion in the meeting with the east side cities.
I don't even know if I want to wait for that, I want to send them a letter.
David, is the, is a rural northeast rural overlay, does it affect cities and their governance of?
No, yes. Once something gets annexed into the city, or if it's already in the city, they're subject to their own land development regulations. they're subject to their own land development regulations. So this, the regulation that this implements this.
Right.
Would not be applicable in the cities.
Yeah. And so when they.
Unless they, unless they choose to make it applicable. I mean, they would have to adopt similar regulations in the city.
I had a gentleman about the mining, I had a gentleman send me a text one time, probably two or three months ago, and he says, oh, there's all these dump trucks and all on Happy Hill Road. I think that's a historic road and it should not be subject to all these dump trucks. Well, the mining's been there for several years on Happy Hill Road. And so those trucks have been there all this time, several years.
So Date City, for whatever reason, does not regulate mining the same way the county regulates mining. So.
So that's a permit through the city to mine it.
So that project, that project has a long history.
Yep.
Where the Date City, Date City annexed it and then allowed that hill to be mined. The limits of our regulation was the impact to the road because Happy Hill is the county road. And we did make that entity mitigate for their impact to Happy Hill Road and the intersection of Happy Hill Road and 52. But the actual allowance of the mining was allowed by Date City. Now, in theory, it was to support residential development, but for many, many years, it was just a big dirt mine.
Right.
So, but I, my discussion with the city at the time, they don't have any mining regulations like the county does.
Why don't they copy ours?
That was my suggestion back in, whenever that was approved.
Well, yeah, it was prior to my arrival, so it's been 17 years now.
My suggestion was that they do need to develop mining regulations, but they.
We passed the East Pasco Rural Protection Ordinance when I was chair. And I was chair in 2012.
But your mining regulations are even older than that.
No. When this was annexed into the city, that was, because it was.
It's a long time ago.
We were dealing with transportation impacts when I arrived in HOA.
We actually challenged, this is really old. I'm really dating myself now. But we actually challenged the annexation in court, but we lost. Because it's very difficult to challenge the annexation. As long as it's contiguous to the city, it's very difficult to win in court on an annexation challenge.
Well, does anyone else feel as I do that, I mean, I think our rules say, what does it say? That you can't change the height of a mountain by X or hill?
Well, it doesn't say that. It says you can't mine the mountain. It limits the amount of grading that you can do on those hills. The intent is that you can still put development on these hills and you could still do mass grading. And you may need to remove, say you're building a retention pond, you may need to move some of that dirt for your retention pond, but you can't mine away the hill.
You can't sell the hilltop.
Right. You can't, you can't do what Date City is allowing to occur under our code.
Okay. So whatever, however you want to word it, I would be interested in sending a letter to Date City for them to consider adopting something more, I mean, what do you think? Is it overstepping or I hate to see it?
Why don't I just reach out to Leslie Porter, which is the city manager, talk to her about that, and then come back to you with, with what they think and what they think they can do that would coincide with what we do in the county.
Because they may not even know that we don't allow that.
My personal opinion is they don't have the same level of staff dealing with these issues that Pasco County does. So we have a staff that knows how to regulate mining. I'm not sure they have enough staff to even regulate the property.
That's why they could just adopt ours. They don't have to invent a new rule.
Even if you adopt the regulations, somebody has to administer. And I don't, I question whether Date City has enough staff to administer, properly administer regulations like we have.
Right.
But that's a discussion that the chair can possibly have.
I can discuss that, reach out to Leslie Porter and talk to her about those issues.
Okay. Then that lady that spoke about building a house, so she can't live in her current home and then demolish it before she gets a CO for her new home? Oh, there. Okay. Why, why, I'm kind of surprised. You have to demolish a current home before you can start building?
That rule's been around for a long time here.
Well, I get the CO. I get not giving her a CO, although I'm, you know, I'm all afraid to use. I don't know if that one counts, but.
You know why that rule was put in place? Because people would be living in a trailer and then build their new home with anticipation that they would remove it. And once it's done, without that ordinance being in, once that's done, then they'd keep both properties.
Well, she wouldn't, I think we could say you don't get a CO.
We're working on some language with the LDC to, we had this discussion a few board meetings ago with regards to having a mobile home or a trailer, if you will, while your home is being constructed. So we're working through the nuances because the slippery slope is what Commissioner Oakley refers to, is it becomes permanent. You know, I'm not familiar with the particular situation or what the rules are with regards to that. We can certainly have the team look into that and get back with the citizen. But you know, there's always two sides to that story.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, if I could on that?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, I think the solution is you've got a livable house right now, trailer right now, right? They want to build a new one. As soon as the other one's done, all you've got to do is put conditions on that as soon as it's done, before you're going to get a CO, the other one's going to get demolished within 60 days or whatever it may be.
That's the same as Mr. Sarkis was talking about.
So I mean, there's ways, other counties are doing it to the north. So it can be done. I know sometimes you get the fear of a person that doesn't do it, but.
Does our rule suggest that now, Mr. Steinsteiner?
Well, the.
Ordinance or?
The ish, well, it's building, building code and the land development code are operating together. It becomes a multifamily property if there are two units, two units with, on the property with certificates of occupancy. You can't condition a certificate of occupancy. So that makes it difficult to say, we're going to issue a certificate of occupancy for the new house and then, but require the old house to be knocked down.
Prior to.
Prior to. So there's going to be a window, even if you were to issue a building permit for the new house. There's going to be a window where you're going to have to have one house taken down before the CO can be issued for the second house. And once you issue a CO, that's pretty much it. You don't, yeah, you're done.
Yeah. And we're working through a lot of nuances because there is some nuanced stuff with this. We're looking at lot size. We're looking at active building permit considerations and among the other things that Attorney Steinsider points out, there's, wish it was that straightforward, but.
All right. Is that it?
I thought of something else, but then I started conversing with the chair's office and I lost it.
You know, before you started, we had a lot of time.
I'll stop because I do want to hear an update on Live Local.
I'll actually give you some time later. You can come up with something. Okay?
But we have some good and not good things moving through the legislature. So I'm anxious to get a little update from Ralph. So I'm going to shut up.
Okay. Mr. Bradford, you have something today?
I know, sir.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Mr. Marano?
I'm just going to bring a couple of things real quick and I'm good for the Live Local. I think we need to get that discussion. I think the sooner we have the discussion, the better, even for later on today.
It'll be good. Yeah.
So I want to say, I'm very happy with the SunWest project that got approved today. The construction should be done by the fall of 2024. The volleyball nets that are going to be in, which also work for sand soccer, they get tournaments getting ready to be scheduled. So it should be a good boost for that whole area up there. And I want to just bring up a point. I'm glad we passed a stormwater plan today. Met with the company yesterday. I know, I guess everyone else has met with them as well. Jason, I think, done, doing a great job, got a great team, team working on it. And I think it's going to be critical that we look real closely, and I had this in my conversation with him. We had a big baffle box grant at the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council in the estuary, something we've talked about here.
Yeah.
Pushed it down there, got it. We got it, but the estuary, when they did it, they focused on just the old Tampa Bay first. They want to wait another year before they put us into it. I told Jason, I think what we should do is get our own consultant going, go develop our own baffle box plan. We can submit something through Regional Planning Council, through the estuary, to get that moved up a lot quicker. And then if it gets approved through the state, which is where it's coming from, from part two money, then we can make a move forward. So I just told him I, I think that's what he should do. I think he's going to do it anyway, but I just want to bring it to the board if he comes to an item like that. It's because of that. And I want to thank Colleen. We got our first NOAA grant ever. And it was all on her persistence about litter traps that we had talked about before. She kept pushing, pushing. And Bear Creek is going to be the first one we've got done. It's going to improve water quality in Pasco County. So more to come. There's a whole bunch more coming in from a $370,000 grants, working with IFAS, University of Florida. So Colleen, thanks for the great work. And we'll have a probably announcement coming up in March when we're going to do a presentation or some type of kickoff for it. But other than that, I just want to go to Live Local because it's the most important thing in front of us.
All right. Mr. Powell?
Yes, sir.
You want to go through our meeting at Tallahassee? I got some pictures there somewhere.
We can talk about it. I mean, there were a lot of things. I think it was a very successful legislative trip. We all, we all went up hand in hand. I thought we had a pretty good plan and approach, and I thought it worked, worked very, very well. Chief of Staff here will be reaching out to you, if she hasn't already, to discuss anything that you'd like to see done differently coming up in the next one. But again, it's trying to continually better ourselves and again, better, more importantly, better our chances for appropriations or working legislation that's going to be of benefit to our citizens here in Pasco County. So I just thank you all for participating and doing that and working together on this because I thought it was a very successful trip. And of course, I'd like to reserve some time for Live Local because that is extremely important. And a lot has happened between our trip to Tallahassee and even today.
Okay.
Thank you.
I agree with you and I think it was a great meeting that we had in the legislature. And it turned out our meetings were very, very quick and a lot quicker than we thought they would have happened. And I think they were very meaningful meetings, much better than the year before. And I think that's just a plus-plus for the meeting we have because compared to the last year, it was way more productive than we had before. So I think if we mirror that in the future, we'll still do a good job.
Yeah. I think, I think our efforts even at the start of having a workshop where we discussed our legislative agenda and got our, our thoughts aligned prior to walking in there was, was important. So you'll see more of that. And I'd like to widen that net again to our municipalities and even to some of our private sector folks. And really, let's, let's talk about One Pasco. So that's, continue, we'll continue to push that.
Right. Okay. Mr. Steinsteiner?
David, do you want to?
For way too late.
Live Local. Well, so first I'm going to ask Ralph, do we have any real-time updates?
No.
So this update may differ.
Great report, Ralph.
Jack or Mike are probably going to jump in here in a minute. Can we get my PowerPoint up there? So we met with Senate President's Office, Jennifer in the Senate President's Office yesterday, and we showed her this chart. Can you all see this chart? So basically it's showing you that we don't have a deficit of affordable housing in the 80 to 120% range. And so this is what we tried to show the Senate President's Office that, hey, can we tailor the Live Local Act so that it's actually addressing Pasco County's true need? Which if you look at this chart, our true need is in the 0 to 80%. It's, you know, we do have, we do have a deficit in that area.
Do we have quiet here, please?
Okay. So we do have a deficit in the 0 to 80% range. So, and this was, this is done based on a study we had done by USF. The data source is actually from the University of Florida, but, and this is for the entire Tampa Bay MSA, and we're working on data specific to Pasco. But this is, to me, this is a very telling graphic because it's showing that the target of the Live Local Act, which is this 80 to 120% range, both for the land use preemption and the tax exemption, that's not a need for Pasco. And so our initiative over the last few weeks, and Mike has been instrumental in this and Jack's been helping, you all have been helping, has been trying to get this, and I'm going to give a special thanks to Commissioner Simpson, who's been, who was very instrumental in trying to open up a dialogue with Senate President's Office, explaining this to the Senate President's Office, explaining how what might be a need statewide for Live Local is not necessarily Pasco's need. Pasco's real need is in that 0 to 80% range. So we met with Jennifer in the Senate President's Office yesterday. She did explain to us that our initiative is sort of being bifurcated, which this gets a little complex. But the land use piece, which that's where the commercial and industrial property is subject to the land use preemption. The land use piece, there is going to be a bill, she's already told us, there will be a floor amendment that will be addressing the land use piece. Now, whether it has our language in or not is still up in the air. That's why I just asked Ralph, do we have a real-time update? We may even have something as, you know, this afternoon on that issue. But we should know either this afternoon or the latest tomorrow, whether our request on the land use side. And I can show you that language.
And David, that would have to be by 2:00 today. So.
I believe so, but I'm not the expert on when they, the latest they can file floor amendments.
Yeah. They may do some on the floor, but by today, 2:00, whatever's going to be submitted has to be submitted.
There's some permissional elements that have to happen with that. So it's a higher standard. So 2:00 today will be a very good bellwether.
So here's the language that we actually propose on the land use side. And this is the language, this language or something similar to it is what we'd be looking for in the legislation that would be coming out today. We basically ask for the ability that if we do a study, and we have a study in the works for USF that shows some of the data that I just showed you, if our study shows that our real need for, for housing, affordable housing is in the, is for lower income folks, and it's like, lower income I consider 0 to 80%, then we can ensure that if somebody comes in under Live Local and wants to use our industrial, commercial property, they have to provide housing that meets that 30% need or the 50% need or the 80% need. Because that is our real need. Currently under the law, they, somebody could come in, use our industrial property, use our commercial property, and they could provide housing that just at 120%. Well, that's just market rate housing in Pasco County. That's actually above market rate housing in Pasco County. So it's not giving us any housing that's any better than what we normally approve anyway. In fact, there was a graphic on how many units we've approved recently, Mike. Is it 36,000 multi-unit units?
Yeah, I think the number was about 36,000 units.
So all of those 36,000, so going back to this slide, we actually have a surplus in the 80 to 120%. That surplus is probably going to go up because we've approved so many market rate units in the last five years. We probably, you know, we're going to have well more than that amount of surplus in Pasco County. So Live Local is not meeting our deficit. So our hope is that we can, the first clue about whether the legislature's listening to us is whether language like this gets into the bill that's going to be coming in later today, hopefully tomorrow. The tax part of it, according to Jennifer, is now being wrapped into a separate bill, which they call the tax package, which would be dealt with later in the session. And that's part of a big omnibus, you know, omnibus bill and whatever they call it, that where the Senate and the House negotiate tax exemptions. And so according to Jennifer, the issue about whether they can change that threshold and the tax exemption will be debated as part of that larger tax package. That being said, to me, the land use side is a good litmus test about whether they're listening to us. If this change gets into the bill that's going in tomorrow, I think that's a good indicator that they're actually listening to us and that they would likely make a similar change on the tax side because our proposed language on the tax side is almost identical in the sense if we do a study and it shows that our need is below 80%, we can take that 75% tax exemption that currently applies to 120 and bring it down to 80. And then our proposal is that the 100% tax exemption would then be go down to 50% of AMI. So we would ratchet those tax exemptions down to meet our actual need. And if you look at the, you know, the first folks that applied from the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, I'd say probably 95% of them were applying at 120. The two that are, the two applying in Pasco were applying at 120. So I do think that getting that tax exemption down to 80% will significantly help us. It may, we may actually get very few, if any, tax exemption applications if it gets down to below 80.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I think, I think part of our challenge is going to be, is when they started out with this, they didn't call it the affordable housing, whatever. It's called the missing middle.
Which I take issue with that description because.
Right.
Pasco County, or Pasco County, the missing middle is not 80 to 120%. I would argue there are missing middles probably in the 60 to 80% range. That's our missing middle. And so there's this misconception, in my opinion, that statewide, the missing middle is in the 80 to 120% range. There may be some counties where that have a miss, a missing middle in that range. But for us, the missing middle is, I would say, 60 to 80 or 50 to 80. That's, that's our missing middle.
50 to 75.
You go beyond 40.
I mean, we have a need even below 50. But, but if you're asking me, like, what would best serve our firefighters, our sheriff's deputies, our school teachers, which to me should be your target for the missing middle, it would be in the 60 to 80% range.
And I'm wondering if we should use their language, you know, because they call it the missing middle. Well, that's, I don't know if it makes a difference.
That's effectively what our proposed change would do, is it basically restructures what is the missing middle. It takes it down a tier. If we do a study showing. If we do a study showing that our need is below eighty, we take all of those tax exemptions and land use preemptions and basically bring them down a tier or two, our missing middle. It basically is working within the structure of the existing Live Local Act, but tailoring it to our county's needs.
And I want to underscore that point because it truly is, the language that David has come up with truly addresses our need. It allows local control and allows the bill to stay intact as, as the bill writers intended, whether, whether or not you think.
We think they intend.
I'm just saying what I see here. So, but that is, that's really the genius behind it, and it truly is a true compromise. I mean, we could have been asking for carve-outs, exemptions, and things like that. The way that this has been handled has been, you know, quite collegial and quite professional, in my opinion, and I, and I think that it really, truly is a way that enhances the bill, and that's kind of the way that we've, we've put it. It puts local control for affordable housing that makes sense for Pasco, or makes sense for any other county. It can be distributed across this whole state to all jurisdictions. That's the beauty of it. So, yeah, as David says, we will wait and see. The land use side is part of that, and it's going to be heard, the bill, the bill is to be heard, I think, on Wednesday. So the cutoff for amendments, yes, ma'am, the cutoff for amendments is at 2:00 PM today.
So my recommendation to the board would be that if we don't get language similar to this in today's bill or tomorrow's bill, to me, that's an indicator that probably time to give up, that we lost, and that we probably need to go in and just send off our demand letters and start the litigation process. Because I think this is, if this doesn't work, I'm not sure that, I mean, this is basically asking the legislature, if you're serious about affordable housing in Pasco County, please do this change.
Another, something else that happened, I don't even know how, how, Ralph, I don't, I don't even know how legislative this could happen, but they opened up, they opened up the timeframe for more housing to apply.
For the taxes.
More apartments to apply to come off the tax rules as part of the amendment, but they went ahead and opened it without passing the amendment, right?
Which I thought was interesting because they reopened it under the theory of Senate Bill 328.
Yeah.
But Senate Bill 328 hasn't even finalized yet.
I know, so how'd they open it up?
Somebody directed them to reopen it. Now, I don't know yet whether Pasco will get more than the two that we have.
Yeah. We need, we need.
I'm hoping that our threat of litigation may have deterred a few people from actually applying. But, yeah, there's probably going to be jurisdictions that get more applications that, to our point earlier, this may have just been the tip of the iceberg. I don't, we don't. Now, the good news is that other jurisdictions, and I'd say the one that's been most active besides us has probably been Alachua County and Gainesville. Gainesville did speak at the second committee meeting, made some, made similar comments to what we made. They've been pretty active as far as wanting to get some changes made.
What they're looking for is some way to identify student housing as being exempt from Live Local.
But I do think, I do think that Gainesville would benefit from our language, too. I mean, because it would allow them to do a study showing that for them, the need, you know, if they want to target it to need, they could say, well, student housing doesn't target our need. We want to, we want to, we want to do our own study to show what our need is and then target this to those that actually need it.
I, I think we're incredibly vulnerable because of the amount of apartments that are, that are done in the last five years and in the pipeline, they don't have any protection. But I think every college town in Florida is extremely vulnerable as well.
So one thing that's been kind of hurting us, in my opinion, is in the Tampa Bay area, we're somewhat alone. Hillsborough's been somewhat supportive, I would, you know, but, and they may be taking some action, I think they're still investigating. But I was just in a meeting at Tampa Bay Partnership, you know, yesterday, we're talking to some of the jurisdictions. Manatee doesn't have any applications under Live Local, Polk doesn't, Citrus doesn't, I don't think Hernando does. So most of the counties around us don't seem to be getting the Live Local activity that we're getting. And so it hasn't really hit their radar, and they're not really, so they're not really worried about it. That's why they're not saying anything. So it's, it's really just a small portion of the counties in Florida that are directly affected by the applications that have been submitted so far.
And just to be more clear on when we said they opened up the application period, it opened up Monday, and it closes Friday at five for currently built apartment complexes in the last five years to apply. And they also took out the renovated ones.
They did take out the renovation language, which is probably helps us.
Now, how can they, so?
That was not in the existing law, by the way.
It's what?
The renovation language was not in the existing law. That was a proposed addition to the law.
Okay, but I wonder if they're allowing renovated ones to apply then, since they're following the old law.
If it's not in the law. I mean, but while that helps us, our biggest vulnerability is the fact that we have so many apartment complexes that have been built in the last five years.
Yeah.
Or that we've approved that will be built shortly. We probably, on a per capita basis, have more than just about any jurisdiction in the state of Florida.
Yeah, I think so, too.
So a lot of, the reason Pinellas, Hillsborough probably hurt less is a lot of their apartment complexes are older. They're not going to be able to take advantage of that tax exemption. They still have new inventory, don't get me wrong, but we have a lot of new inventory. So I guess that's, Mike, did you want to add anything, or Jack?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's very important for everybody to realize that this is a tax break for just apartments that aren't going to increase any more supply, thereby it's not helping anybody. They're just going to give a tax break that's going to hurt schools, it's going to hurt the sheriff's department, first responders, all our, all our county operations are going to get hurt.
And the school board, and the water bans with districts.
So it, so with all those breaks going on, and then the two that we have, one's from California, one's from West Palm Beach, of two applications. But if the rest of them catch wind of it, or they find that they can make it work, it's going to go. And I agree with you, David, we're going to pretty much know by two o'clock today whether we get some wind or not. I'm going to be driving up right after the meeting to go up there, to be up there tomorrow morning. I'm just going to try to talk to our senators first to just say, if you can just put a push on of some type of discussion of what's going on, how your county's getting affected, maybe they can get something in to make it go. That's, that's our one shot for right now. On the other side with the House, our representatives, when it goes to debate there, they may get a little bit stronger for us. We'll have to see because everybody's worried about what appropriations they got. But this is such a critical thing for Pasco County, much more so than the others. But the others, we don't know how much they're going to get affected, but we are leading the charge, and thank goodness we are leading the charge on it to at least create that awareness that others are looking at it. Because otherwise, Alachua County probably wouldn't have showed up the other day.
Yeah, I personally talked to Commissioner in Alachua County and made him aware because he had no idea that this was going on.
I think Alachua and Gainesville, in my opinion, have caught on. I mean, they're, they're actively asking me for copies of our complaints, or, you know, they're, they're researching what they can do to attack this. So, but in my opinion, they're probably the only other jurisdiction besides us that is actively working on doing something.
I want to say that the Florida School Board Association had no idea this was going to affect them. I spoke with school board member Crumley, whose attorney lobbyist is Gray Robinson, who also represents the Florida School Board Association, and Sean had a conference call with the FSBA. They had no idea they were all going to get hit. So, you know, maybe this one hundred and twenty AMI works in some counties, but you know what? It's not going to work for their school districts.
I did speak to Betsy Kuhn about that. She, they are trying to get a carve-out, and I don't know where their requests, they're trying to carve out the school millage from the impact. And they're trying to take, I guess, because there's certain homestead exemptions that don't apply to school millage, so they're trying to use similar language to carve out school millage from the exemption. I don't know if they'll be successful, you know.
Does that put more on us, or?
But keep in mind that that would probably be part of that tax package bill. If there's any carve-outs under the tax exemption, or any changes to the tax exemption, at least according to Jennifer, that's where that would appear. It's not going to appear in the bill that's going today, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Today, tomorrow, we're either going to get something on land use or we won't.
Can you talk about that a little more?
Which, which I'm sure.
The tax, the tax part of it.
So currently, those who get a, they get a seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent tax exemption for any units that they supply that meet one hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Now, they have to technically be ten percent below market, as I've explained on multiple occasions. That's fairly easy to show. All they have to do is do a market study, show finding three or four apartment complexes that have rent ten percent higher than theirs, and they could say they're ten percent below market. So all it is, as you know, through Florida Housing Finance Corporation, they have to basically get Florida Housing Finance Corporation to certify that they meet that requirement. Those certifications are supposed to be coming out on February fifteenth for anybody that meets the requirement. I suspect the two in Pasco will probably end up meeting that requirement unless, you know, they don't, unless they know something I don't know. Once they've done that, they then have until March first to go ahead and apply for the exemption. The two in Pasco are seeking the seventy-five percent tax exemption for one hundred and twenty percent of AMI, which I think you all know this, those rents are over two thousand dollars a month for a two-bedroom, and they're not any lower than the rents they're charging now. In fact, we talked about this, in some cases, the rent actually may be higher than they're charging now. So if it goes to the, once they get that certification notice from Florida Housing Finance Corporation, it then goes to the property appraiser, who then makes a final determination about whether they qualify for the exemption. Now, my hope is that our demand letters, I mean, I think we'll know pretty soon whether our demand letters are going to go out or not. The only wrinkle may be is if they give us the land use request, we won't know about the tax request until later in the session. That may, that creates a little bit of a dilemma for us because those applications are due by March first. And so if we don't know whether we're going to get similar language on the tax exemption until later in the session, at some point, it's going to start jeopardizing our ability to attack those two. We might have to go and send our demand letters before we even have the language to know whether we, where we stand on the tax exemption.
Mr. Chen? I have a question on that. What, what is the legal significance of issuing the demand letter before they apply on March first? I've not really understood.
Well, my hope is that if I issue the demand letter, that they don't actually file for the exemption with Mike Wells. I'm actually trying to take pressure off of Mike Wells having to make that determination, and it's not going to be an easy determination for him because he's going to have a letter from us saying, we think it's unconstitutional. So I don't, and I won't put Mike on the spot, but I'm actually trying to preempt Mike having to make a determination on the exemption. In addition, I don't have to serve the Attorney General for a demand letter. Once I file the complaint, I then have to serve the Attorney General, and the Attorney General, in theory, could step in and try to defend it.
Mr. Chairman?
So it, but it's not uncommon to send somebody a demand letter before you file suit. And it's a fairly common, all of our personal injury attorneys, when they sue the county.
I think I got one once.
They send a demand letter before they, before they file suit, and it's pretty common.
But that's statutorily required.
True, but it's not uncommon, even when it's not statutorily required, to, to send a demand letter before you file suit.
Mr. Mariana?
Yeah, and I think David has done, those demand letters need to get ready to go, which I'm sure they are. And I would say, depending on how tomorrow's session goes, would be the time when we send it or not. If we haven't got this language in there or something like it that benefits us, then we need to pull the trigger so that property appraiser Wells doesn't have to make a move. He can wait until this thing gets resolved in court. I think when you look at, if you would go to that yellow chart again, when you look at the way they broke these charts out, and you look at the numbers, look, look at how it starts out from the left side, after the thirty, thirty, zero to thirty percent. It goes at a ten percent range, a ten percent range, a ten percent range, a twenty percent range, and then a forty percent range. When they talk about the missing middle, the way that chart should be struck out all the way through with, let's say, ten percent increments uniformly, it would show you that this is like the top echelon of people they're actually trying to help. So I don't think that missing middle argument works. I don't think the chart of the Carlos works. I think we've got a great argument to why this would be unconstitutional, and it's definitely worth the push to go forward.
So on this chart, it says Tampa Bay MSA, it doesn't say Pasco, so.
So there's a reason for that because you have to understand that I, so I asked USF, their study is not done. Okay, they're still finalizing their study. They did this as a favor to me, generated this chart based on the data they have currently. They're still working on the data specific to Pasco to tailor these numbers specific to Pasco. I don't anticipate they're going to be materially different on the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent range. If anything, we may have even more of a surplus in Pasco than Tampa Bay MSA. This is probably even underestimating the surplus for Pasco. But we just don't have, the study's just not done yet. So Elizabeth Strom in USF, she's aware that we're using this data, she's aware that it's part of a legislative request, she's actively working on, but the way the Schimberg Housing Institute publishes their data, they do it in these increments that Jack just talked about. She, she can divide them into different increments, but it just, she needs time to refine that data specific to Pasco. She does have it, it's just not to the point where she can publish it for us yet. So this is the best data I could get as of today, but we intend to get even better data that's more Pasco-specific, but the general message should not change. It's going to show that, and Elizabeth has told me this, we don't have a need in the eighty to one hundred and twenty range. There's another chart, which I don't have up here, which shows like eighty, eighty-six percent of our housing, housing burdened or cost burdened families in Pasco County are in the below eighty percent range.
And, and, and as I've said before, when, you know, if this goes through and we have to raise our millage to cover the holes that it's going to create, who bears the brunt of that? It's the renters in the non-homesteaded houses that people can afford to buy their own home, and it's our business community that's going to carry the weight of these guys getting the tax break for no benefit to our citizens. It's just insult on injury.
And I listened to the second committee meeting, and the sponsor of the bill openly said that this tax exemption is available to market rate rents.
She did say that.
So that apparently is their intent, is to give a tax exemption for market rate rents. So, so I'm cautiously optimistic that, you know, the Senate President's Office will listen to our request. I do want to thank Commissioner Simpson again for making that push for us. He was very helpful. He was able to at least get an audience that others could not, so I do appreciate all of his efforts.
I do think that if, if they don't want to change this for the state, that we try and seek a carve-out, like Monroe County got a carve-out. So the rest of the state, you have to have a complex that has seventy units or more, and they, I don't want to say Monroe got a carve-out, they got, well, they did get a carve-out, made it worse for them, in my opinion.
I'm not sure I would call that a carve-out.
Yeah, no. To carve in.
They got a negative carve-out.
Yeah. Where now any complex in the Keys that has ten units or more can go off the tax rules, where before it was seventy. So they're going to have a lot more applications in the Keys, and they were already very concerned about the one.
So Commissioner, I will tell you that our initial request, our initial letter to the Senate President's Office, it was clearly requesting a carve-out for Pasco, and one of those requests was because of.
Yeah, the job rich.
Because of this chart, which we've seen.
Yeah.
Which shows that we're not like other counties. You know, we, we have a, we're housing surplus and a jobs deficit. So we're not like Hillsborough and Orange, where they've got a job surplus and probably have more of a need to live local. Our need is to work local, not live local. So we didn't, we did ask for a carve-out for this very reason, but Jennifer told us early on that the Senate President was not interested in doing carve-outs. The advantage of our new language is it's not a carve-out for Pasco. Any county that wants to do this study could do this study. It's not specific to Pasco. Now, I don't know how many other counties will do it, maybe, maybe we're the only ones that will do it, but it's, it's not a carve-out, it's any county could utilize.
I see the beauty of your text now. This is a different path if you want to take it.
Yes.
I love it. I didn't catch that until just this second. Sorry for my slippiness.
I thought of this while I was in the shower.
Tell David it needs to shower more often.
That's what Mike told me, he needs to shower more often, so, and I said I won't be insulting.
Have all our legislators, has our delegation seen this language and understand that this allows for, kind of allows for a carve-out for Pasco? And potentially Hernando, I think will get this.
I think Jack intends to make it aware, make them aware. No, certainly the Commissioner Simpson has seen it because we gave him this lang, this. This is the very language we gave to Commissioner Simpson that he discussed with the Senate President. And so, when we spoke to Jennifer yesterday, she had seen this language, and she used the meeting as an opportunity to understand the intent of the language. And so, we did explain that to her. But I don't know that our individual members of our delegation have seen it, but it sounds like Jack's going to show it to them.
Yeah, we're preparing some documents that we can send to them so they'll have that awareness.
I think once 2:00 comes, then we need to, if we don't have anything new, that we can take.
But I have shown it to the school board representatives. They're aware of it. Alachua and Gainesville are aware of this request. I do think it would help all of them. I think it would help any county similar situated to Pasco. And there may be some counties that don't want to use it because they feel like 120 percent of AMI helps them.
Can you go back to that jobs chart that you had before that graph? And Jack, you're on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. You know, I was asked, I asked if we could get, fill in those other dots around us, but I was told it would be really expensive. I'd love to know who those other counties are. You know, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, six there that could be in a cluster with us.
Yeah, on this list that they use is like 53 different counties. There's like 20 that are in the 0.8 percent or worse, like the range we're in, and it's another 17 that are on there. But there's still a missing 10 because it was done a regional study. David's taking a look at it now for us to see if he can get any more information to make this even more valid, but.
We can't find out who those dots are around us from the planning council?
He's going to take a look.
I actually asked Tampa Regional Planning Council, and I was told the person who did this is no longer working there, and so, they could not give me the data for those other dots. This chart was created for Pasco County. That's why you see most of the counties that are actually identified are in the Tampa Bay area. So, they were comparing Pasco to other counties in the Tampa Bay area for the most part. So, those dots probably do represent other counties, but they weren't focused on the rest of the state. So, David Engel may be able to complete this chart. I don't know, and I'm hopeful that he can, or that he could find somebody that can. That's not in my wheelhouse. I would not be able to do that, but maybe David Engel can.
Yeah. David thinks he can.
Sounds like we named the right person.
If we can, we'll move on, and we'll come back to this. Hopefully, we'll hear something this afternoon at our meeting.
If we get an update.
We'll have time, I believe.
In between now and the end of the board meeting, I'll let you know if they address our concerns.
Okay, I remembered what I had, and I sent it to Derek. Derek, do you have that email? It's the second picture. It's the site plan for the apartment, thanks, David. The site plan for the apartment complex. And this is something that's on our agenda this afternoon. But it just, and I don't know that this site plan is binding. I never remember how all that works, but it goes to my concern that we keep approving apartment complexes that have no context to anything around it. And so, here you have an apartment complex, and in the back is front-loaded townhomes, which I've shown you pictures of front-loaded townhomes. They're not my favorite. And I also personally think eight, I'm beginning to think eight townhomes in a block shouldn't be what we're doing either. I think we should be maybe capping that at six, but discussion for us. But here, you know, I don't know. I just, I get frustrated that we have these little self-enclosed communities. I think there's almost 600 units here. I just, I don't know. I'm not the planner, but if we're trying to make walkable, you know, this is the challenge when you're a county and not a city, because I don't think a city would ever allow this.
Is this an item we have this afternoon?
Yeah.
It's a potential continuance, just so you know, but.
This one is?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it's on consent, is what the applicant told me.
Correct, but we've since had some conversations. It's a potential continuance at this point in time.
All right.
And so, I really look to our planners and, you know, is, what do we want to look like? And how do we, what kind of field do we want for our community? And it's just such a challenge for us as a county without any cities to develop well. And I don't know what the answer is, but I just feel, I'm just not a fan of this, this kind of growth.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I was going to, I actually had requested and talked to the applicant's representative that I wanted to pull it for today. And then, we talked more about even continuance because frankly, Pilot Country, to me, is a great asset. We need to try to help that airport. The air zone, airport runway protection zone, we did, protects the area there. But to me, we should be looking at even, trying to work to make sure if they need to expand, we can work with them to go do that, too. I think they're working on something right now to do that. As far as all the density goes, I think the townhomes, I'm comfortable with those. I think if we can improve them, that'd be great. But all those apartments, with all the traffic going down at 52, is something that needs to be looked at real close.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is, you need to have this discussion during the hearing for this. I sort of let Commissioner Starkey do her thing because she was doing it part of generically.
This is philosophical.
You're starting to get into the weeds on this site plan. I'm a little uncomfortable.
So, can I, I want to say one thing philosophically, too, on this, and we'll bring it up again. You see that when we have connectivity to the north and to the south, which I think is important, we need to respect those roads that are connecting more than we do. And I, so, I look forward to some time, somewhere in the not-too-disapert future, maybe workshopping these kind of issues.
Okay, let's hold off on talking about that item until this afternoon. We had a resolution this morning that was canceled by the Van and Madam Clark.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I wanted to mention, we all signed them. There's about 105 of them.
Right.
So, if it's canceled and put onto another meeting, we'll all have to re-sign them, or you can move forward. I can do it by, I can read it as title-only. You can bring it back as an R item for a presentation of the resolution later on.
Do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
All right.
So, you want to read that as?
I will go ahead and read by title-only. This is Resolution Number 24-063, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, congratulating the Wiregrass Ranch High School Marching Bulls for winning the Florida Marching Band 2023 Class 4A State Championship.
Very good.
Thank you.
Will approval?
Second.
By rook call vote?
District 2, Commissioner Waitman. District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Most of pass 5-0.
And Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of items.
Okay, I'll let you go with those.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two events coming up that I wanted to make the public aware of, and we have our beautiful Valentine's Day wedding ceremony, which is out front here in the historic courthouse. I love that. It's beautiful. It is on Valentine's Day at 11:00 a.m., and the deadline to register is the 9th of this month, and we're limiting it to 25 couples. We also have another event coming up. It's called Passport Saturday. Our office is opened on Saturday, March 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that's in both government centers in Newport-Ritchie and Dade City. So, hopefully, it's helpful. You won't have to take the kids out of school. You won't have to take time off work. Come and get your passports on March 2nd, 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. My office held two big shred events. We do this in coordination with the county, as well as Shred 360 and Covanta. And I wanted to say, it was a huge success. We've had amazing turnout. We had a total of 468 cars between Newport-Ritchie and Dade City, and around 20,500 pounds of paper that we shredded for our public. So, some great events that happened and coming up, and I appreciate the time, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. I have one item that I'm going to present, so we kind of covered the going to Tallahassee meeting. Yesterday, I went to Tropical Acres Estates down in South 301 on, in Zephyr Hills. At that meeting, I spoke with all the residents in the HOA. There was a full room. They were very concerned about their entrance and exit on 2301 between 39 and 56. And as I drove down there, I noticed, and they had had two or three accidents. One person was killed. Another lady, I talked to her and her husband, were in a wreck, and it turned their car upside down. And then, there was another accident or two. And the entrance to Tropical Acres Estates was right across from the new development on the south side of 301. I originally thought that we had already started the construction of 4 Lane from 39 back down to 56, only to find out that hasn't even started, and all these issues are created right here at this entrance to Tropical Acres Estates. Basically, I reached out to FDOT on some issues about when there might possibly be a light. Got information it could be up to a year before a light comes, and it's going to be right at their entrance. But in the meantime, they have this issue going on, and I'm sure the people across the way probably have a similar issue, but a little different because coming out of the property on the south, they're turning right to go into Zephyr Hills, which most people from both those areas need to go back towards Zephyr Hills, or that's where they're wanting to go. But I've suggested that possibly we can make it a right turn only out of Tropical Acres Estates and put some flashing lights up first. And I reached out to FDOT to see if that was possible, and they, Jason was under Secretary Quinn, mentioned that possibly that can happen within 48 hours or so, or sooner, as quickly as they possibly could, flashlights about cars entering the highway there. Because when I came out of that area, I could only turn right. There was so much traffic coming right in that area, and it's a two-lane road, and there's so much push from 56 and coming out of Zephyr Hills, that by the time it cleared for me actually be able to turn right, there was no way I could go across because of traffic coming to the north on the other side of the road, and there's no place to turn. I mean, you can't, you couldn't make that turn. So, right turn only for a temporary time until we can get some kind of a light system or something set up to help these people. But it's all based on safety. And so, the actuality is, I'm moving very quickly. I already talked to FDOT for us. I reached out to Roy Major with VCS to possibly think about some of the issues, even the possibility of them. I think their property goes all the way to Chauncey Road. Maybe there's a road there that will come out on Chauncey, maybe temporarily, if not for the future, add a connection where they could go on Chauncey Road from that, from that park. All these things need to be done quickly because, again, we're talking about safety. And I've even, I've heard that there possibly could be a temporary light put up, but that would take a little time, but I haven't got that answer yet from FDOT. I look forward to hearing that very soon, that we'll be able to do something to help. And the developer across the way, if he was having to turn against traffic to go into Zephyr Hills like the other park, they would have been screaming and hollering already, and that developer, it seems like he's willing to try to push things up to make that light happen sooner. But I made that visit, so it was worth going to, and they do have some serious issues that we need to direct staff and folks to do something about. So, I think everybody's working in the right line of thought so we can maybe have something, make some, make a difference there to help them. Because, like I say, the construction for 4 Lanes, not even there yet, and they've had all these issues and all these wrecks. Imagine what it's like when you're doing construction right there between those two developments. So, it's helping a lot of citizens right there south of Zephyr Hills. If y'all remember, on MPO, we had talked about, City of Zephyr Hills wanted to change their movement of their traffic in the streets in Zephyr Hills to make it move faster, but I kept speaking out against that, and I think y'all were along with me. The fact of it is, if it moves faster through Zephyr Hills, you still have this block right here in this two-lane area where I'm talking about, between 56 and 39, that's still an issue. This needs to be fixed before we make faster traffic come on through from Zephyr Hills, so.
I drove that a few months ago, so I know.
You remember what we were talking about, yeah. And that, and this is the reason why. This, I didn't realize how bad it was at that time, but a person's already lost their life here, and we don't want anybody else to have issues like that, so. But very important, so, for these people, so, yeah. And all of our citizens are important, take care of these issues.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
My understanding next week is Pasco Day and the legislature. And I am very pleased and proud that my legislative aid policy will be representingly up there lobbying for Pasco County, so, thank you.
Be good. Yep. So, that's all I have now. We can, we'll take a break for lunch, and I'll see you back here at 1:30. All right.
Good.